All right. Good evening, everybody. Great to see a large crowd tonight calling to order the city council meeting of North Bend, Washington for November 2nd, 2021 via virtual meeting as we've been doing for some time now. Will the clerk please confirm the role?
Oh, council members at present, your honor.
Thank you. Council, the first item in front of you tonight is the consent agenda. We have nine items on that agenda, including minutes payroll checks and some agenda bills that have worked their way through previously or with your consent. I'm a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries and is unanimous. I believe it was Mr. God help that gave the motion and Mr. Elwood the second. Citizen comments. This is the time for citizens to comment on agenda items, excuse me, on any item not on the agenda that you wish to speak to council about. If you have comments about an item on the agenda, we'd ask you to wait that time slot. You'll be called upon during that time period. We do have a couple of hearings tonight. If you want to comment, please indicate in the chat box or by star nine if you're on the phone and you will be called upon. You'll have up to three minutes and begin with stating your name and address for the record, please. Don, are we getting any?
Not yet.
We'll give a few more seconds here.
Still nothing.
Okay, seeing none, then we will move on. Next item on our agenda is a presentation. This is item 10, Smart Communities Award. Council, I know that you're aware for the public, the city was awarded for from the Washington State Department of Commerce and the governor's office, the Smart Communities Award for action taken earlier this year on form-based code. Rebecca Deming, would you please introduce the topic and the speaker tonight?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The Governor's Smart Community Award is an annual program that recognizes local governments for their work in implementing the state's Growth Management Act to shape future growth, economic vitality, and quality of life in communities across Washington. As mentioned, we did win the award for our downtown or for our downtown form-based code on under the smart projects category, and I have Mark Barkley here to do the presentation.
Mark, please feel free to unmute and you can go on video if you would like as well.
My video has been stopped by something, but otherwise I'll get going here though.
There you are.
Thank you and really appreciate the time. And as you can see there, there's a picture of your award that we'll be bringing to you. So wish we could do this in person, but here we are. So again, on behalf of my director, Lisa Brown and Commerce, I am absolutely pleased to present this Governor's Smart Community Award to the city of North Bend on behalf of Governor Jay Inslee. This award highlights the governor's commitment to preserving and protecting Washington's in viable quality of life. I would like to take a minute though to mention that I grew up in Issaquah, Washington, not too far down the road from y'all. And yes, I'm sorry to say I graduated from Mississauga High School, so don't take any offense to that. I have truly fond memories of North Bend, the Train Depot, Georgia's Bakery, the movie theater, Snoqualmie Falls, Rousenake Lake, the Haystack, and so much more on Mount Si. I mean, it's just a wonderful place to always bring family and friends. I remember fondly the Raging River and everything around that area. It's just really truly memories growing up in that area. So from that, I just again, I personally want to truly acknowledge and thank you and your dedication and ability to preserve the distinct nature and the historic nature of North Bend. So it's absolutely my personal, uh, just really thanks to your, your staff for the work and dedication in this. So again, this award recognizes your hard work of your citizens and your businesses and local officials to make sure we have a clean environment, a healthy economy, and high quality of life standards throughout your community. The attributes really make a great state, a wonderful place to live, to work, to play, and to help can continue attracting top talent for your businesses from around the world. When a community comes together, that's really the key piece of that is when they come establish that vision and that, that desire for that future, that's truly what brings the community together and both in preservation, but attracting high-quality jobs and development because having the great place truly attracts that business in that downtown commercial zone. So again, we are here today to acknowledge and celebrate North Bend's form-based code for downtown commercial zone. This collaborative effort engaged both communities to produce an innovative solution that is a model for others throughout the state. It will encourage affordable housing options in the downtown area, support a walkable mixed use, people-oriented atmosphere. It supports communities' vision as lived out through their comprehensive plan that builds onto the unique nature of North Bend and its downtown and its historic district. So again, it's my honor and privilege to bring this award to you virtually. And I lastly, I'd love to thank Associate Planner Bree Keverin, Senior Planners Mike McCarthy and Jamie Burrell, Economic Development Manager Jesse Reynolds, Community and Economic Development Director Rebecca Demme, and the City Administrator David Miller, as well as the Economic Development Manager. Oh, yeah, already got that. So thank you again. And it's again, my honor and privilege to be here to participate in your meeting today. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Barkley. On behalf of the city, thank you very much for being here tonight to present this award entirely unexpected, very much appreciated. We thank you very much for that, and thank you for calling out those individuals in particular. And to that, I would also add the thanks to council, which really got behind this form-based code and worked through with the staff and the public to come up with a great solution for our city. And so we're, we're much appreciative of that. Council, do want you to know also, along with that really cool-looking award, there were certificates issued in each of your names. Those are going to be in your mailboxes. I believe this clerk told me by morning, and that's kind of, kind of a pretty cool recognition as well. And so pretty big deal to get, to get the governor and the Commerce Department recognizes. We'd much appreciate that. I'll open to council if anyone wants to make any comments. Mr. Longback.
Thank you, and, and thank you, Mark, for coming out and doing such a fine job presenting us with the award. Our staff has just been outstanding in moving us forward as a community, and we couldn't have done it without their vigilance and their support and their dogged determination. We, we went through several iterations and finally got to the product that you found worthy to award. And I just want to thank you and the governor's office for the recognition, the Department of Commerce, and we might even let your coworker who took the time to be here tonight, Ms. Valerie Smith, I see her is on the meeting, and I just wanted to encourage her to say a few words if she wanted to. I mean, you get all dressed up to come to the meeting, you might as well, you might as well say a few words. So I did want to thank all of you for, and we really do appreciate the honor of this award. Go ahead.
If I could take a quick second, Valerie is absolutely the engine behind this effort, and she is gets all the credit for staffing and working through all these projects.
Thanks, Mark. I can't take too much credit because I wasn't the one who started the program, but I have been running the program for the last three years, and we were so bummed when we had to cancel for the 2021s just because of the timing. It was right when the pandemic was happening. So we, you know, we had to just hit cancel, hit pause, and so we were really happy to be able to do it this year. And I know most of our presentations are going to be virtual, so we're very excited to next year's chance to get back into our communities and actually, you know, take tours of the projects and, and really see what is happening locally. We are this year trying to schedule some video events to try and capture the, the what would be in-person type stuff. So stay tuned. We'll, we'll be putting out more information after, after these are all completed. So like I put in the chat, the judges were really impressed with the nominations this year, and they were happy to elevate North Bend as one of the, the shining stars this year. So thank you for all your work.
Thank you, Valerie. Any other council members have any comments or questions? Heather?
I would just like to say, when I first heard of form-based code, I didn't really know what it meant as a new council member, but I know that each and every council member on our council really cares about our community and what it's going to look like in the future. And this is a great opportunity for our town, and I personally am grateful that we get to try to implement this new process.
Anyone else? I'm seeing any waving of hands or raising of hands or anything else, so we'll close it out there. Again, thank you very much for the award.
Your Honor, Mr. Kenyon has his hand up.
Just very briefly.
He's not a council member. Do we need to remind you of him, Mr. Kenyon?
This is legal advice. This is important legal advice.
I just, I just glad he's still awake.
I just want to say, Mark, I could tell immediately from both the sophistication and the eloquence of your presentation that you too were an Issaquah High graduate.
You, you graduated, Mr. Kenyon?
Nine long years.
Yeah, but not from law school, just from high school.
Thank you for, thank you for the levity there. Appreciate it.
Tell we really love our attorney.
Great way to close it out. Thank you again for being here tonight. We really appreciate it. It is a huge honor. Look forward to working with you further into the future.
Thank you, man.
Thank you.
Council, next on our agenda, item 11, AB 21-121, An Ordinance Amending the Taxes, Rates, and Fees Schedule Regarding School Impact Fees. The stemming.
So this is a follow-up from the last meeting. My understanding is that we have worked and scheduled the, the joint meeting as requested, and so this is back on the agenda for your review and approval.
Thank you. Any clarifying questions? We'll see if we have any comments from the public, and then we'll move to a motion. Mr. Garcia.
What was the, what was the date that we ended up landing on again?
Dave?
Yeah.
Want to say December 8th. Make sure though that he chimes in. Where'd you go, Dave? Did I lose him?
He's trying to find mute, I think.
I'm, I'm unmuted. And your quest, your question was again, I was struggling with the mute button. I was rushing.
Question was the date that was scheduled for the joint council.
Is, that is December 8th at 7:00, and we're working on the agenda. It will be Zoom. They wanted it in person, but of course, we don't have our hybrid setup yet.
Mr. Elwood, any clarifying questions?
Yeah, it's just a question perhaps for staff or any of the council members. When we last met on this item, I'd asked the district, Mr. Stokes specifically, to provide us with what the actual, the percent of portables that are actually in North Bend and throughout the district. There's 36% of elementary schools are in portables. I wanted to know what that distribution was. There was a guess that most were in Fall City, but no actual numbers came my way. I also asked how impact fees and other tax dollars are distributed across the different communities. Essentially, where's the money spent? How's it going? I did not receive any of that information. Did any of my colleagues or any staff receive any feedback from those questions that I asked from the district very specifically last time we met?
Thank you for those questions. For the administration, I'm not aware that we've received any of that information.
We, we have not, but I would like to receive from any council members, any information that you'd like to have on this agenda. I'm working with the superintendent to put in an agenda together, and if there's, that's great, Brendan, and I'll jot that down. We, we want them to be able to know what the dialogue's going to be about. If you have any questions or data that you want from them or anything that I can put on the agenda, I appreciate that.
Okay, so that I'll circle back offline on that.
All right.
David, what would your deadline be for questions?
I would say if I can have them within the next week and a half, that'd be great.
Thank you.
Yeah, because there will, we are anticipating quorums for the, certainly at least for city council, I would assume also for the school district. It will be, of course, a public meeting, but we'll need to appropriately, appropriately notice with this agenda, not necessarily all the questions, but we will want to get that out in proper time. All right, we'll move to a public comment. If you are a member of the public and would like to speak on this agenda bill, please indicate in the chat box or by star nine on the phone, and we'll call upon you.
I'm not seeing any.
Okay. Right, then we'll move back to getting a motion on the table so that we can move to further discussion. Believe this came through CED. So Ms. Miller, if you'd like to introduce the motion. Page 171 in the packet, 173 in my PDF.
I, I don't see Mary.
She was with us. Did we lose her?
Your Honor, I'd be happy to make the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Longback.
Motion to approve AB 21-121, An Ordinance Authorizing the Taxes Rate and Fees Schedule Relating to School Board Impact Fees as a Final Reading.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second motion by Mr. Longback. Mr. Garcia, would you use a second?
I was.
Thank you. Discussion, Mr. Longback.
Well, Your Honor, I don't think that there's any doubt that we got the school district's attention after our last meeting, and I think that we will be able to have all of our questions answered, and certainly we should make sure to endeavor to submit them prior to our meeting that Mr. Miller is putting together. As far as this particular ordinance, this is something that I think we need to get moving on. It is imperative that we do get the impact fees to the school district so that they can perform their functions, and I would recommend to do pass at this point.
Yeah. Mr. Garcia?
I had a, actually had a hour and a half long meeting with Dr. Given this morning and feel a lot better that our, our meeting will probably turn out somewhat to our liking, and they're, they're looking forward to having the meeting just as we are and, and trying to collaborate on, on these issues that we, these concerns that we have and, and moving forward with a plan to improve the schools.
Thank you. Other council? Mr. Elwood?
Thank you. I'm, I'm first going to start with just a general statement because I know last, last meeting, I'm pretty passionate about this topic. I still am. I'm concerned that our citizens aren't getting a fair shake. Maybe detention isn't being equally distributed across the different areas, but I'm hope, I'm happy and hopeful that I'm wrong, and, and I want that discussion. And one of the key areas that, that troubles me is this idea of portables or relocate, relocatables, as the district refers to them as. To me, those are temporary structures used, you know, to house the kids. We have a lot of kids. The problem that I see is that these portables aren't going away. In fact, if I understood the packet well, which is to be great if the district was here to answer more questions, and maybe this will be on the list, Dave, is that there's this elementary school number seven that's being proposed there. And when I look at that, it says it could be in Sequami, it could be in North Bend because the district owns school in both locations. Okay, that's fine. The next piece of it, if I understood the packet, again, I could be wrong here, but just clarifying what I read, like any normal citizen voter, taxpayer might, might interpret, is that school number seven is going to cost $52 million. At our last discussion, when pushing the point about portables, this, this next mystery elementary school was proposed to be the solution. And when I challenged that and said, well, $52 million, that's a lot of money. Can't we invest in remodeling our existing elementary schools? And my impression of the reaction was that was rather scoffed at. And, and so then when I pressed further and said, well, what if we don't support a bond measure? Because you're going to need voters and you're going to need elected officials like us, vocal advocates really pushing to support that because the high school bond took some time, as we know, and, and there's some love hate with the taxpayer spend and the school districts here. And the solution for not supporting for another elementary school, if I understood the conversation correctly, again, I'm happy to be proven wrong, was that they'll continue to bus students a very long distance. And I believe my colleague, Ms. Cohen, brought up the fact that her child is being bussed 45 minutes to school. That to me is not a solution because that's one and a half hours a day. And if you kind of do the school math, again, this is napkin math, that would mean that your kid is spending about one month and a week of your kid's life during a school year on a bus. That to me is not a reasonable solution. So thinking about a different elementary school, hearing that it's not locked in North Bend or Sequami is, is interesting topic. But when you read it in there, and again, if I understood what I read correctly in the packet, that, that new mystery number seven elementary school, wherever it goes, that's why I say mystery, $52 million, is only going to reduce the portables in our district by 4%. Again, I could be completely wrong, so it'd be great to be corrected on that particular point. That, that's troublesome. And then when I think about, okay, school number seven, and the impression that I got is that, you know, Mr. Stokes was perhaps suggesting that might be more of a North Bend school, although it's clear it hasn't been decided. I take a look at just quick Google searching of the history of the different elementary schools, and I'm only focusing on elementary schools here, folks, and, and what's been happening in the district for a while. You see that we have three Sequami Elementary Schools. Sequami Elementary had been around since the 60s. It's been remodeled four times, at least that I can tell, up until 2018. Cascade View, looks like it came online around 2005, 2006. I can't find if, when it was last remodeled, relatively new. Timber Ridge came online in 2016. My assumption is not much remodeling has happened there, but all three of those schools have been remodeled in contemporary time. And if you look at the permanent capacity that they've laid out in their tables, they are already overcapacity with this year's enrollment based on what the permanent capacity is allowable for the schools that they remodeled. That's troubling to me. When I look at North Bend Elementary, founded in 1962, last remodeled, 1999, permanent capacity, 332 kids, next year's enrollment, this enrollment, 443 kids. Now again, I'm looking at their numbers. I could be misinterpreting this, so it'd be great to get some clarification on this, but 1999 is when it was last remodeled. We've had plenty of portables come in, but no remodeling. Opstead was built, what, 1988? I can't find a history when it was last remodeled. My assumption is that it probably hasn't been remodeled in, in contemporary times relative to Sequami. Fall City, 1908, 1916, somewhere in there is when the school came online, last remodeled, 1999. They are overcapacity. Permanent capacity is set for 287 students. They are saying their next year's enrollment is 467 students. So when I take a step back as a voter, as a taxpayer here in North Bend, and I'm trying to say, okay, impact fees are kind of nominal. If you look at the spend for the new mystery school, elementary school number seven, which is supposed to cost $52 million, only $2 million of impact fees are actually going to go to support that. And Mount Si High School had matching state funds, and if I understood what the district is putting out correctly, there are no matching funds available, no matching state funds available for elementary school number seven. So when I start doing these calculations, I really get perplexed as why aren't we remodeling the current infrastructure that's there? I'm not a developer, but from my developer friends, it's always cheaper, more affordable, and better to, to build what you got as opposed to breaking ground and building that new. And if we've learned anything at the contemporary history of the city of Sequami, with the elementary schools in Sequami, all of them have been remodeled in contemporary times, and they're all overcapacity by at least 100 students across the board, permanent capacity. So yes, there's a problem here. The portables are a problem here. My main problem is the city of North Bend, perhaps Fall City, has been neglected substantially. And to say that the solution is to spend $52 million on a school that could go either Sequami or North Bend, or bus kids an hour and a half a day, spending a month, napkin math here, of their school life on a bus commuting is just frustrating to me. So I hope that explains my passion on this subject. My kids are all grown up now. They're off, and one's off in college, one's already graduated college. All went through the portables at North Bend Elementary. Mr. Mayor, your, your, your kid who's now teaching in the district 30 some odd years ago, went through portables at the North Bend Elementary Opstead. Yeah, this, this is an issue, and, and I don't know how to solve it. You know, I understand we have our own budget responsibilities here, but, but this to me just smells too much of, of neglect or a focus in another area that's not where our taxpayers are paying tax dollars. So there has to be a solution. So I'm very thankful that we're going to be having Meeting of the Minds here soon. I've been relatively rubber stamping anything the school district asks for us to spend just because I believe in the schools. I believe in curriculum. I believe in our teachers. It's very vital. It's very important. But at a certain point, I have to take a step back and say, okay, enough of this. We have to figure the solution out, and the options on the table just don't, just don't smell right to me. So I'm, I'm excited for the discussion so I can be better informed and perhaps proven wrong on a lot of my assumptions here as I've articulated tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Elwood. Appreciate your passion. Ms. Cohen?
Just to clarify, Brendan, my children are grown now as well. They're 27 and 25. So I don't know what the busing situation is now. That was before Twin Falls Middle School was built. So it, it might be different. It might not. I really feel like the underserved areas of our community that don't have a vote do get pushed to the side and like, oh, we'll just bus them because we want our Snoqualmie Ridge kids to be able to walk to school. But I don't know that. It's just an assumption. But you're right, we need better options for all of our students and all of our community.
I couldn't agree more, Heather, with both of you. I think there, if this feels like, and I could be completely wrong, a very lopsidedness to where the efforts and monies are going. And we are not the, the ugly stepsister. None of us are, the city, and we need to speak our voices now and also listen very carefully. So this meeting in front of us is really kind of crucial, and I appreciate the efforts to go this way.
Thank you. Counsel, any other comments?
Well, I, I appreciate our efforts to, to meet. I, I think I would caution that, that comments about the, the schools were built in Sequami because quite honestly, Sequami is a lot bigger, and they grow a lot more. I do, I do agree that our schools seem to have been, you know, Brendan nailed it, 1999, last time NBE was, was remodeled. Opstead's probably never. I'll say this, the, the challenge of new versus a rebuild, especially at North Bend Elementary is, is going to be a little bit of floodplain related. I mean, it, it's expensive to build in the floodplain. I mean, you start talking about raising all these buildings, there's a good chance it is cheaper to build a new school. That being said, let's get the plan going and, and get on it, right? Because some of these portables are old, dilapidated. I, I was talking to some PTA parents today, and they're not even sure that some of the oldest portables are even being used. So why are they still on the school grounds? I mean, is it just a, is it just a housing of rundown? I mean, is it just a, is it just a housing of rundown portables at this point, North Bend Elementary? I I don't know. I I'm glad everybody has the same passion uh I do about this. I I hear about it a lot from parents uh now that, hey, what's going on with our schools? And and I think it's important that we have this dialogue. I appreciate everybody's support in holding this up a little bit until until we do get that dialogue. I I do feel it is, you know, our our responsibility a little bit to to move the 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 impact fee for this forward. But man, I'd like to see an impact fee that includes a plan to put some money, not even, not even just in North Bend Elementary, but Fall City Elementary, I think, has the most portables. You know, there's already portables on Timber Ridge, which is a school that's four years old.
Well, well, actually, Chris, I'm sorry, Chris, I actually think that they
And then I'll come back to you. I'm sorry. Mr. Goddell?
That's fine. Um, I don't have a lot to say. We do need to pass this, it's something that's important. But I would add, you might wanna look at the history of us supporting and fully funding uh the schools as opposed to other cities. Um, and I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you. Uh, any other council member who hasn't spoken, then I'm gonna go back to Ms. Miller. Okay, Ms. Miller.
Oh, well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just gonna only add, after Chris spoke of uh Timber uh Ridge, is that they opened up, I believe, and they added portables almost immediately, as I recall.
I think they shared that with us. Mr. Mercia.
Yeah, and 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 Alan's correct. North Bend has usually been a a city that has typically had uh a fifty-fifty or less support of the school bonds and levies. I would also say that North Bend has changed since the last time we've gone out to a school board levy. I I mean, I, just on my street alone, I was talking to the superintendent about that today. I've had the last four people that moved in on my street, have all bought houses in, for big money. And they have two-year-olds and newborns and new ones on the way. And these are the, these are the people that are gonna get behind levies and bonds to s- to support our 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 schools moving forward. So I think that the demographics of North Bend have changed enough that that we should be able to hold our own moving forward with this.
Let's see, Mr. Elwood, then Ms. Cohen, then back to Alan.
Yeah, I just, I'd just like to add, and and thank you for my colleagues for what you're saying. I mean, for me, it's, I don't know if there's equity or inequity here, I really don't. Um, it would be great to understand that. And and even if it isn't equitable or fully equitable across the different communities, maybe it's it's reasonably equitable. I I just don't know. But what I can tell you is when I read the documentations, when I think about tax, when I think about supporting bond measures, when I see what's happening elsewhere, I try to put on my mind as a reasonable citizen of of North Bend, and I look to the electeds to say, okay, wh- what's going on? So, but but I, but I do appreciate all your comments, thank you.
Do you, Ms. Cohen?
Going back to the portable, so my, she is now twenty-seven, was the first third grade group to be in the first brand-new portable at North Bend Elementary. And at that time, I was horrified, but it ended up being fine. But also, that playground that is in place was our PTA that year. We raised money, we just wanted a little small portion, and we raised enough to that whole playground. And I find it kind of ridiculous that we have to basically have a GoFundMe for our schools.
Thank you. Mr. Goddell, did you have another comment?
Yeah, I just need, I just wanted to clarify, Chris, you, I was talking more about, we, from the standpoint, have always taken the impact fees and passed them along, never discounted it. In fact, there was a year that we actually increased the impact fees by reallocating or re identifying certain units that had to pay higher amounts. That is not true in other cities.
Yes, thank you. Um, there are no other council comments um before we move on to motion for the benefit of the public. I'm gonna ask Mr. Kenyon to just briefly give, I know, Council, you're aware of this, but I'd like the public to know the action that you're about to take. And, you know, we have an interlocal agreement with the school district about this action and how we take it. And there are some concrete choices uh among you. And and I think it helps the public understand why we're taking uh action this evening. Mr. Kenyon?
Thank you, Your Honor. Try to be brief and clear, Council. The the state legislature passed the impact fee statutes in conjunction with the Growth Management Act. While the school district has its own elected board, it is the city council that collects the impact fees because they're generated by development activity within the city. So the school board goes through the math that results in its capital facilities plan, just like we do with our capital facilities plan. They then present that to you with the proposed impact fee. You do have the authority to either approve that, uh reduce it, or even eliminate it. Just wanna make that clear. I'm not suggesting any one of those three alternatives, but you have those three options.
And if if they choose to take less than approving it, then we have some obligations for reporting to the district.
Right, we would, we would send a, under the interlocal agreement, we would send a a written explanation of the council's decision to do anything other than approve it. That then triggers a a meet and confer uh discussion with the school board where you may or may not change your mind. But ultimately, it's it's always your decision.
Uh, Ms. Cohen?
Can you repeat the three options that the city council has? Mr. Kenyon?
Approve the fee that's in the capital facilities plan and in the ordinance before you, reduce it or eliminate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Garcia?
Yeah, I I I guess I'm, I wanna clarify, I don't, I don't think our intent here is to reduce or eliminate the fee. I I think our our question as as community leaders is, is why isn't this impact fee larger? Taking into account that our schools in our city, especially, I shouldn't say our schools in our city. I should say our North Bend Elementary Schools, opposite NBE, have a lot of temporary or portable buildings uh that is housing this this new capacity. I mean, this comes down to the old adage of growth paying for growth. And I think the concern is, why isn't an, why aren't the impact fees being collected? Including elimination of some of these portable buildings. What the impact fees were recollecting are probably based on what we, what the, what's already been spent at the high school and nothing else, including picking up uh a reduction in these portable or temporary buildings.
Thank you. Any final comments? Seeing none, motion before you is to approve AB twenty-one dash one-two-one and ordinance amending the taxes rates and fees schedule relating to school impact fees as a final reading. All in favor signify with aye?
Aye.
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 Who's opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries and it is unanimous. Thank you for that great discussion, Council. Next item on our agenda, introductions. We have item number twelve, AB twenty-one dash one-two-two. This is a public hearing ordinance adopting the twenty-twenty-two property tax levy. We'll start with uh staff overview. Then we'll, they'll get, uh if there are any uh clarifying questions out of council immediately, then we'll open the public hearing. The hearing is going to remain open until final action is taken. Uh, not expected to be this evening. Uh, and following to today's portion of the public hearing, we'll move to any council deliberation. Ms. Masco?
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, I'm going to show a brief PowerPoint presentation and just provide a little bit of context and some background of our property tax, our assessed valuation, and the three options that are before you for consideration. So let me see if I can share my screen here. All right, can you see my screen?
Yes.
Basic zoom screen in front of me, not seeing a presentation.
You're not seeing the presentation yet?
I see it.
I see it.
I see it.
Okay.
I see it.
I see it as well.
It's kind of tricky sometimes trying to to do this at the same time as um everything else, so, okay.
I'm viewing Rebecca Demming's desktop. I see the city of North Bend trophy.
That's weird.
That's all I see.
We're all seeing different thing.
Is everybody in speaker mode?
Uh, I see assessed valuation. Perfect.
Everyone, who else has seen? Okay.
Assessed valuation.
Me.
Okay, so Brendan, you're not seeing it.
One of the mayor. The trophy.
You guys pay your
I'm not even see, I'm not seeing the trophy or my screen, it's no longer on my screen, I see
Now it's changed.
Okay. All right, we're all good now.
Yes, thank you, sorry about that.
It's okay. All right, that's kind of, yeah, that's odd.
It was weird. It's a great trophy, by the way.
You had the extended view.
All right, well, at least the mayor's got the uh presentation in front of him. I hope everyone else does.
Okay, it sounds like everyone else does, so we'll go ahead and get started. Um, so what you should be seeing on your screen is a chart that shows the history of the assessed valuation from twenty fourteen until this year. As you can see, we have grown quite a bit. And the difference between twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two is a little over nineteen percent. The um sixteen percent that's referenced in the council bill was an old number. And I apologize, I had not updated it with most current iterations from King County. But what that results in, um, based on an option, which we'll discuss in the future here, would be approximately two-point-two million dollar of a property tax levy, which is a little two-hundred thousand dollars more than the two-million-dollar property tax levy that we have in place for twenty twenty-one collections. Of that assessed valuation, new construction um accounted for um a little over a hundred and thirty-two million dollars. And that one percent, or excuse me, that increase to our property tax results in a hundred and forty-six thousand four hundred and fifty-three dollars based on preliminary numbers. Um, so as you can see, twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two are pretty close to the same numbers as far as assessed valuation that's been brought on to our tax rules. Actually, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, and twenty twenty-two all have exceeded a hundred and thirty million dollars, um which is a big increase over the years prior to that. Um, and they generated between a hundred and forty-six and a hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars in property tax levy funds. So here is the extremely easy-to-understand way property tax is calculated in the state of Washington. Um, and I tried to change the slide a little bit this year, um to provide a little bit more clarity based on some comments last year. But what you start with is your prior year's actual levy, so that number at the top, the little over two million dollars is what our current twenty twenty-one property tax levy is. And then, this is just the calculation, it, you are allowed under Washington state law to take a one percent increase or an inflationary increase above that um two million uh dollar that we currently have. So that would generate twenty thousand five hundred and sixty-eight um dollars in inflationary increase. Next, you add in the new construction, which is what was on the previous slide. And that is um times by your current property tax rate, or the property tax rate for twenty twenty-one. And that generates a hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. Plus administrative refunds, which has to do with some refunding and re-leaving of a number of reasons what could have happened in the prior year that we're now entitled to. So we're entitled to one thousand five hundred and eighty-eight dollars that was improperly classified in twenty twenty. Um, next is an adjustment, just because there are always changes between the time that the council adopts its property tax in the middle of November to the time that the assessments are final, um our assessed valuation, which could be anywhere from late November to late December. And that says they're continuing to to refine the assessed valuations on existing homes. Is there um continuing to refine the assessed valuation of new construction? And all of that has an impact on what our bottom line is. So this is just um allowing the city to capture whatever that final assessed valuation is. If we don't, I mean, if it's not twenty thousand, if it's only five thousand or four hundred, or whatever it is, the King County assessors automatically adjust it. If we don't put this in there and our assessed valuation increases between the time that the council adopts the property tax ordinance and um the time that the final assessment rule is certified by the county, we lose, we lose that money that we would otherwise be entitled to. And so this is just kind of a placeholder to make sure that we have the appropriate capacity for when the assessed, final assessed valuation comes in. So you add all that together and you get uh to, a little over two-point-two million dollars for your total levy amount. Now, to get your levy rate, you take that total levy amount of two-point-two million dollars, you divide it by your total assessed valuation. Um, you times that by one thousand for every, every, um, assessed, a thousand for every um assessed valuation, and you get a little over a dollar for your twenty twenty-two property tax rate. Sorry, I was having some trouble speaking there. So this next slide shows the city of North Bend in comparison to some of our um surrounding peers in King County. And you can see that our uh regular property tax levy for twenty twenty-one was just a little over a dollar ten per assessed value, a thousand in valuation. Whereas our neighbors in Sequami um are the highest at two dollars and thirty-four cents per one thousand assessed valuation. And then we have any number of ranges um in between. And the average of all of these cities that you're seeing on the chart is one dollar and thirty-five cents per assessed valuation for um their regular property taxes. It's not voted property tax or any other special levies. This is just your regular uh property tax for your general fund activities. Now, this slide shows not only our regular tax, but it also shows the impact of cities that have regular property tax levies and um also have a fire levy, meaning they live in a fire district, and so they're being assessed for their fire services as well. Some cities have them, some don't. We have a city fire department, so it's part of our general fund activity. Well, that we're, we're part of a fire department as opposed to being in a fire district. So we're still at a dollar ten per one thousand assessed valuation. Um, whereas the average of our peers is a dollar eighty-two, because some of them, again, have the levy and some don't. So this is just kind of an all-in comparison, so you can kind of see where everyone else is at. And in this particular case, the city of Duval is the um highest one with two dollars and forty-eight cents of assessed valuation. Here's everyone's favorite slide, where does your property tax dollar go? And contrary to popular belief, the city does not get the largest portion of every dollar of property tax. We wish we did, unfortunately, we don't, and this is how it actually is distributed. So for every dollar the city gets, um and this is this year, it gets about nine-point-three cents on the dollar. Sequami School District, however, gets thirty-six points, six cents of that dollar. And the state of Washington is close behind with almost twenty-six cents per dollar. And then you can see the others, even King County receives more of our property tax than we do, which I've always found extremely interesting, if not frustrating. And this is just another way of looking at at it. And again, you'll see that if you add the Sequami School District and the state of Washington tax levies, which are for education, sixty-two and a half, um sixty-two-point-five percent of every dollar goes for education, either to the school district or to the state. And now, what everyone's been waiting for, as I'm sure you've all read in your packet, you have three options for consideration. And now, what everyone's been waiting for, as I'm sure you've all read in your packet, you have three options for consideration. Option number one, which is just no increase other than taking your new construction, would levy approximately $2,224,859 or a levy rate of approximately 99 cents per 1,000 assessed valuation. And remember, this year, you're at $1.10. Option number two is if you choose to take the one percent statutory increase, statutory allowed increase, in addition to your new construction, and that brings that up to $2,245,427 or the levy rate of a dollar. Option number three is a one percent increase plus the bank capacity that you have generated by not taking that one percent in the last year or so. And that would bring your levy amount up to $2.3 million and a levy rate of $1.3. So this is a chart which shows the impact to the median assessed valued home in North Bend. Last year, the median home value was 608,000. It's grown to 623,000 in the course of the last year. So if you are a homeowner of a $623,000 home, and you don't take into account any of the other taxes that you paid to the school district or the state or King County or any other jurisdiction, that 99 cent levy rate would generate $618.46 for the city for the entire year of 2022. Option number two with a one percent increase, which raises the levy rate to a dollar, would increase, would add $624 a year to city property tax. And option number three, using the one percent increase and bank capacity, would generate $640 or cost an average homeowner $640 a year for city services. In 2021, if you owned the average home of 608,000, before it increased to 623,000, you would currently be paying this year $671. So any of the options that you choose for the city portion alone of the property tax will be a decrease for our citizens, which is good news. Unfortunately, we can't control what our other jurisdictions around us are doing and what their taxes are, which again are the majority of your property tax levies. And you do have one other levy, and that's a special levy that was voted back in 2011, and that was to build the fire station for the city's portion of that. That debt is slowly being paid down, and so this year, the excess levy needs to generate a little over $179,000, which is our debt service payment for 2022. And that is a little over nine cents for 1,000 assessed valuation. And so that would be in addition to the regular property tax.
That's there now already, right?
Pardon?
That's still there. That was there this last year, too.
Yes, that's been there since 2012.
Yeah.
So, and it decreases every year. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Ms. Cole?
No, I'm slightly embarrassed to be uninformed on how levy taxes work. And I feel as, at my age, I should know these things, and also as a council member, but please enlighten me with, is this because we don't have an income tax? I don't understand.
This is, this is calculated all throughout the state of Washington on property tax. And there's property taxes in states that have a state income tax as well. Usually what you'll see in states that have a state income tax is they don't have as high of a sales tax as we do in the state of Washington, but property taxes are pretty universal across the country. There's some slight deviations in how they're calculated. The formula I showed you here is state of Washington. I couldn't speak to any other state, so.
And so we're using property tax intermittent as the same as a levy tax?
Yeah, yeah, it's a property tax levy, yeah.
Okay.
And the other name you'll sometimes hear called is ad valorem, which is, I guess, a Latin term.
Which is confusing that they keep switching terms, but.
Yeah, they each, they mean, like, yeah, it's, you're right, there's nothing, there's nothing easy about our property tax in the state of Washington.
Levy sounds so much better than tax.
Or property.
Yeah.
Right? Thank you, Don.
You're welcome.
Any other clarifying questions? Mr. Garcia?
So Dawn, that, that average medium home price, is that 98045, or is that strictly the city limits of North Bend?
To my knowledge, that's the city limits of North Bend.
I find that shocking that it's, that it's, that it's actually that low.
I, well, yeah.
I expected a fire.
And I think that's the thing that, that, that always scares me about this is, you know, the, the, the one percent sounds fine, and yes, it's, it's, either way, it'll be less than, than last year on the rate. But what we don't know is, is what's, what's, because we don't control it, is what's the county going to come in and assess your, your house at in 2022?
Correct.
Right? I mean, it's projected at 623, but there's that, I mean, you know, we're, we're seeing that the house, the housing prices skyrocket out here. So while yes, we're not the big fish in the sea on this, the cumulative effect on the citizen is, okay, so now your house goes from 608 to 650, and you're still being charged the 36 cents, the 10 cents to the county, the 26 cents to the state, the 10, but your taxes will go up, even though it looks like in this they're, they're going down.
Oh, that's, you're, you're absolutely correct, because it's a, you know, calculation based on what your own, you know, home is assessed at and what the other jurisdictions are doing that impacts the tax rate. So this was all things remaining the same, which is about the only way you can show the comparison.
And I, and I agree with that, Dawn. I'm not like pointing fingers of, you know,
Right.
innuendos or anything. The, the tough thing is, it, it sounds like it's one percent. And if everything stays the same, in theory, your portion to the city of North Bend will go down.
Yes.
But, you know, the, the people out there getting ten and a half percent, I won't have to say their name, are out there trying to raise the, the valuation on your house because they get more money from that. So that's where this gets a little tricky to me is, you know, your, your tax, your property taxes still go up because your assess, the assessment of your, the value of your house is going to go up. The King County people aren't going to come out and go, oh, hey, your house is now worth less than last year.
Yeah, you're right. And just kind of to put it in perspective, for 2021, the city's regular property tax levy is $1.10, but the all-in with all of the jurisdictions, it was $11.91.
So Dawn, I apologize for not contacting you before this meeting, but I obviously didn't know what levy meant. But you have your math of total levy, which is property tax, divided by total assessed value times 1,000 assessed value. So that's confusing and scary and.
Right. And then what you take is you take your personal, like, $623,000 home, you divide that by 1,000 and times it by the levy rate of a dollar or 99 cents or $1.10 or whatever it is. Yeah. Yeah. And, and I can tell you, it always makes my head spin even after thirty-something years of doing this. So it just, it's, yeah, kind of an insane calculation.
Okay. Thank you.
It is a tricky calculation that I, to my knowledge, it's the same calculation, same basic math across the country as Dawn was mentioning. I've certainly, you know, I've lived in two other states, I've seen the exact same formula, different outcomes, of course, depending on what the rates might be, but the math is, the, the formula's the same.
Yeah.
But the assessed value, especially in North Bend right now, is, it's scary.
Yeah, yeah. And, and that number, the 623, is provided by King County, and it, it's based on at some point of this year. So you're right, I think it was Chris said that it, it will be recalculated, obviously, in 2022, and you'll get your new little green slip in the mail or whatever that says what your assessed valuation is, and, yeah.
So, you know, it's King County's valuation, number one, which is always disputable. But King County valuation, at least in my experience, has never been what my house is actually worth on the open market. It's usually considerably lower. The other thing, too, to consider here is that those numbers, they have to pick a bearing. So what they've done, in my opinion, just to make it more equal, is they just picked the dead middle, which is the median price. So in the city of North Bend, we have a lot of smaller houses, they may be four or $500,000. So that's what brings that median down, ju- just to be clear. But, but in the end, you know, it is, it is a portion that's allowed to the city of North Bend that we can take and we can use for the city of North Bend and its citizens. So it's not like it's an arbitrary, let's just take it because it's available. It is something that we can put to use. And in the past, we've talked about earmarking specific improvement project ideas and things like that. So at least we feel, we have a good conscious of where monies may be going if we decide to take the full one percent or not. In the end, if you own a house that's over $600,000 or in that upper range, I mean, the, the amount of money they're actually looking at is, is kind of pennies on the dollar, literally, relative to the other taxing districts. So to me, it's, it's one of those things, and, and I, I don't think tonight is the night that we're going to debate this ad nauseam. It's more for public hearing, public comment, but, but there are some other considerations to make on this because I do understand for my colleagues, the cumulative effect of taxes. But we have to understand, and, you know, who's paying these taxes and what are we going to do with them? And why it's relevant that we should take them? Those are the core of the conversation, I think, but.
And, and thank you. And with that acknowledgement, I want to be clear, it sounds like we're ready to move, council's moving more into a deliberation than a clarification. So if we have no other clarifications, I do want to get the public hearing open. Yes, Mr. Alwood, it's just fine. I usually look for that point. One of you does it each time that, that kind of signals that we've got the questions taken care of. All right. So if there are no other questions, we will open the public hearing. I've got the time at 8:04. If you are a member of the public and wish to testify regarding the motion that is in, or the, the levy, the agenda bill that is up for consideration tonight. Mr. Goddell?
Give me the motion before, or is it after?
Public hearing first.
Okay.
Yeah. So we want to hear from you, if you're a member of the public. Again, you'll indicate in the chat box or by star nine, and we'll call on you. You'll have up to three minutes to speak. We, we'll ask you to first state your name and address for the record. This public hearing, as mentioned, even though we are going to later take a motion and potentially some discussion, the, the public hearing will remain open until the item comes back to the agenda later this year. They have anybody biting in the box?
Chat box.
By star nine. All right, again, we will leave the public hearing open, but then at this time for tonight, we'll end the public feedback section. And I will then ask Mr. Goddell, I think this did indeed come through you, Finance and Administration.
Sure. Motion to continue the public hearing on the ordinance setting the 2021 property tax levy until November 16th, 2021, city council meeting.
Second.
Mr. Goddell, I believe my Mr. Loudback was the second. Thank you very much, Mr. Goddell. Anything that you need to say to this, this time?
At this point, I'll do my, I'll have my conversation at our next meeting when we set it.
Thank you. Mr. Loudback?
Nothing tonight to add.
Thank you. Any other council member before we take the vote? Okay, the motion before you is to continue the public hearing on the ordinance setting the 2021 property tax levy until the November 16th, 2021 city council meeting. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries and it is unanimous. Thank you very much for that. Next on our agenda, item number 13, AB 21-123, how very convenient, public hearing only. This is an ordinance adopting the 2021, 2022 mid-biennium budget modification. There's a mouthful for you. So again, we'll follow the same format. Ms. Masco, you're up.
Your honor, so you have in your packets for discussion this evening, for public hearing this evening, a copy of some mid-biennium budget modification summary. So the purpose of the modification is state law requires it, if you adopt a biennial budget, that in the, right before the beginning of the second year of your budget, that you have to have a mid-biennial review and modification. So what this does is it aligns and updates the revenue and expenditure budgets with the updated financial information, adjusts for ordinances, resolutions, and other initiatives, projects, actions, or anything else the council has done during the course of 2021 and, and how it impacts 2022, and it provides for any budgetary revisions or corrections. So when we adopted the 2122 biennial budget, it was back in 2020 in the middle of COVID and a lot of unknowns and variables of what that impact was going to be on our budget. And so council has always adopted a conservative budget, but an even more conservative than usual budget. And so there was the, some pretty big changes between the 2022 adopted and the 2022 modified budget, similar as there was to the 2021 adopted budget and what the current 2021 revised budget is following three budget adjustments that the council has done already this year, and you'll have a fourth one before you in December. And this was a good thing because we had more revenue than we had originally budgeted for, and our fund balances were healthier than what we had originally budgeted for. And so that carries forward into 2022. Also, again, we, some stuff that has occurred in, in projects, positions, collective bargaining agreements that were ratified, all of that needs to carry forward and, and be updated in the 2022 budget. Because when we do the current year budget adjustments, we don't touch the next year. We do that with the budget modification. So it really is kind of a glorified budget adjustment for us because we do quarterly budget adjustments. Whereas some jurisdictions do just the one adjustment, which is, would be just staggering for us to try and keep up with, with our staff. So I, I like the way we do it better. I think it's much more efficient, and council has a much better idea of what our budget is as we move forward throughout the year. So the, some highlights of this modification is it maintains a structurally balanced budget, which, of course, in the state of Washington, local jurisdictions are required to have a balanced budget, meaning that your expenditures cannot exceed your total revenues, including fund balances. So we can't have deficit spending like we see at the federal level. It also continues to meet our general fund, fund balance targets and, and then some. It continues with the fiscally conservative revenue projections. Again, we are making some changes as we discussed at the workshop, but most of them are fairly minor, other than in a few areas that we know we're lagging extremely behind. And then these numbers that you're looking at this evening also include the decisions that the council made at the budget workshop and the recommendations regarding decision cards and human services and community services funding. So that's all now kind of been plugged into the budget. So these numbers that you're seeing now are, are different than the ones that you saw at the budget workshop that did not include decision cards for some of the human services funding initiatives. So I'm not going to go into a whole lot more. You have the numbers before you. Again, good news story, you know, property tax will, is updated based on what's currently in your budget. Um, includes no a 0% increase. It does not include taking the 1% or the bank capacity. It includes revising sales tax numbers, which have been extremely healthy the last two years and click. It revises those upward slightly. Um, business and occupation tax is beginning to increase again, which is great news. And some of the only reductions that we took were um, investment interest, which is at all time record lows, and some of the um, late fee penalties associated with utilities, which the council has waived for, and I have a fly on my screen, so hopefully. It's like, okay, it's right on the camera. We'll see if he.
Where he belongs, please.
Yeah, we'll see if he if he climbs right over the lens or not. We'll see that here in a minute. So some of the highlights of the decision cards that were included in the budget was um, addition of a community survey, a cultural resources plan, um, long range fiscal impact analysis, and expedited sidewalk repair program. Some of the other changes that were made to the general fund um, between time of adoption and uh, this modification is restoration of some of the cuts that were taken because of COVID-19, including um reinstating some of the equipment replacement reserves. It also includes transportation comprehensive plan, uh, re-instituting downtown block party, um, replacement of a police vehicle, which we've delayed for two years now, and um, an update for our comprehensive emergency management plan, as well as um, just an enhanced emergency management program. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
And uh, as a reminder, and I would just want to confirm here with my parliamentarian, we have this as a public hearing only, there's no introduction of a motion tonight. So that's council clarification, then we'll just move to the public hearing. Is that correct?
That is correct, and this will come back to you for adoption on December 7th.
So from council, uh, before we open the public hearing, do we need any clarifying questions to? Seeing none. We will open the public hearing uh, this at eight fourteen. If you are a member of the public, uh, I wish to comment upon upon the mid year biennial budget update. Uh, please indicate in the chat box or by star nine, and we will call upon you. And uh, you'll have up to three minutes to speak, starting with your name and address for the record. Seeing and hearing none, except for possibly Ms. Miller's new cat.
Rob, I heard a cat.
My, my apologies sincerely.
As well as that, that was the recommendation, if I understand it correctly, uh, until the budget comes back for adoption. Thank you very much. I think that ends our action there, unless I'm missing something procedurally.
We don't need to do anything right now?
We're not doing anything right now.
You didn't catch my super, you didn't catch my, you didn't catch my super trippers reference there?
Oh, I didn't.
The cat, please.
Too old and was never good at being up on the latest things like that.
That's like 1984 McFarland, you're all right.
I was old then. Next on your agenda, item number 14, AB 21 dash 124, an ordinance amending North Bend Municipal Code Title 18 and the city zoning map. Uh, this one, uh, I think has been discussed before as well, Mr. McCarty.
Thank you. I am here, I I can't yet start my video. There we go. Thank you, Your Honor. Um, so the what's before you are some amendments to the zoning map and some corresponding amendments to the municipal code. The overall intent of these is to streamline and simplify the zoning maps so that it's easier for all to understand. And I think the easiest way to show you what these amendments are is uh, to share my screen and run through the uh, planning commission map, which is also in your packet. And we'll run those um, one by one. So do you all see this?
Yes.
Right, so we will start with the number one there, and that is currently are uh, within what's called their urban separator overlay district. And the one is also in the neighborhood business zone. And that dual zoning or that kind of layer of zoning plus overlay has created a lot of confusion in the past. We get uh, residents, we get developers, uh, citizens that think that what their allowable uses are are just based on the zoning, where in fact, they're actually based on what the overlay allows. So we're trying to uh, clean that up, that simplify it, so it's just more direct. And what the proposal therefore is with this number one is to get rid of that overlay and just create a new neighborhood business two zone. And the uses and the bulk dimensional standards that would otherwise apply via the overlay will just now directly be applied via that neighborhood business two zone. So it's just streamlining it. Moving on to number two. Find the number two. This is the Dogren property, and we're uh, similarly similarly trying to uh streamline and get rid of unnecessarily overlays. So this has been a part of the Dogren or Tanner Landing Master Plan Overlay District, which applied uh, an allowance for multi-family on top of an employment park one zone. And that's again confusing. We have an application that's moving forward, that's under development right now for multi-family housing. And so what the proposal here is, is to just rezone the portion of the property that's being developed for multi-family housing to high density residential. Um, that's the pink half. The green half of that same property is what's to be dedicated to the city for the new Dogren Family Park. And that is being proposed to be rezone just to parks, open space, and public facilities reflecting that purpose. The number three, you can see has an X in it. This was originally presented to the planning commission, and the planning commission did not recommend moving forward with this one. Uh, what this is, is the Tanner Junction Master Plan Overlay District, which includes the River Run Apartment Project. Uh, that project is um, has permits ready to issue. And what the proposal was, was to get rid of that overlay, rezone the property that's subject to the tent or the the multi-family to high density residential and uh, just leave the rest of the the overlay alone there. That created some confusion and comment from the public that they didn't want to see that change. There was uh, some thoughts that the city was trying to allow something that wasn't allowed there already, which wasn't the case. But just to um, address that confusion and concern by the public, the planning commission recommended just leaving this overlay alone for now until that Dogren or not the Dogren, the uh, River Run Apartments project has been completed. And so number three is no longer a part of the planning commission's recommendation. On to number four. What you see here is the new tenant Trailhead Park. This has been zoned for residential. The um, portion south of Ribery Way was low density residential, and the portion north of Ribery Way was high density residential. So since that's been acquired by the city of North Bend for a park, the proposal is simply to rezone it to parks, open space, and public facilities. Same thing for number five and number six. Number five is property owned by the city of North Bend. It was previously zoned, um, or it is zoned or uh, Employment Park One, but this was acquired by the city a number of years ago from Nintendo. And uh, there's potential for a future levy setback on this property, but it's otherwise intended just for open space. So therefore, it's proposed to be rezoned from um, Employment Park One to Parks Open Space and Public Facilities. Number six is exactly the same thing, only the ownership is different. Number six is owned by King County. That was a property that was acquired by the county for removal of an existing home within the floodway. Um, they, King County is aware of this proposed rezone, and they're fine with it. Um, so that would be rezoned from Employment Park One to Parks Open Space and Public Facilities. On to number seven, on the area within the purple outline there has been zoned low density residential, but this is an area of expansion of EJ Roberts Park. So that includes the portion that's part of the Pulte River Glen subdivision, as well as the portion that the city acquired about three years ago from the adjacent property owner um, to add to EJ Roberts Park. So we're re-proposing to rezone that from low density residential to parks and open space. Number eight. I have to find number eight. All the way to the east, there we go. Uh, this is a part of the um, Cascade Canyon subdivision. And what you see with number eight is a piece of that subdivision that was dedicated to the city. It's got a little trail going out to the river as a shoreline access property or or shoreline park. And so that's being rezoned from park or from low density residential to parks, open space, and public facilities, rec- recognizing that public purpose. Over then to number nine. And this is a little bit harder to see this area. Yeah, zoom in, zoom in just a little bit more. Number nine is William H. Taylor Park, where the depot is. And this isn't a rezone, this is a zoning for the first time. So this area is uh, has been just the the historic railroad right of way, which was never zoned. And so what we're proposing is uh, just to make it evident um, for the public purpose and to reflect the amount of open space that we truly have, we're proposing to zone this property to parks, open space, and public facilities. Same story with number 10. Number 10 was a part of the historic um, Sunset Highway Corridor, which was to become I-90. So I-90 at that point in the 1960s was being considered just directly adjacent to downtown. And this was owned by the Department of Transportation, and it was never zoned, it was considered right of way. So we are proposing to zone this uh, similarly to parks, open space, and public facilities. The northern portion of it is now owned by the city of North Bend and the southern portion owned by the Sideview Metropolitan Park District. And then finally, number 11 uh, was added during the review process uh, suggested by uh, Mark Jocelyn from the the Sideview Metropolitan Park District Commissioner. And uh, it's just this little sliver right here um, as well as um, right in the middle of the 11. This is a property that's owned by the Sideview Metropolitan Park District, um, currently zoned downtown commercial, and that's been purchased by Sideview Parks uh, for some of their open space administrator purposes. So the proposal there is just to rezone it to parks, open space, and public facilities. So that is it, it for the zoning map. We have some corresponding amendments to the municipal code, which just uh, reflects some of those same changes. Creates that neighborhood business two zone, establishes a purpose for it, and then just changes some references from the overlays to that neighborhood uh, business two zone. So again, the public uh, hearing was held with the planning commission. Planning Commission provided the recommendation for all of those, except for that number three, and uh, staff recommended the amendments as well. So let me address any questions that you might have.
Mike, thank you very much. That was incredibly um, good overview, very clear. And um, I want to counsel, which I think they already do, of course, realize that there are a huge amount of work behind that, even though it looks like mostly cleanup. Uh, there's a lot of, lot of conversations that went on. I know the committee spent a lot of time with it as well. Um, so before we take uh, any public comments, if do we have clarifying questions for uh, staff? This uh, column.
So number three, leave alone for now, what does that mean?
Yeah, we could come back to this. We have a major update to our comprehensive plan next year. And so at that point, if there is uh, development that's occurring on the property or or has occurred for that multi-family project, the River Run Apartments, at that point, it would then make sense to come back and to rezone that to identity residential.
So what does that mean? Like, I don't understand how it can be like in a gray zone.
So that it's not uh, what the current zone there is right now is it's the underlying zoning is Employment Park One, which is a light industrial zone. So those apartments were developed subject to an overlay that was established on the property that also allowed multi-family, as well as some other flexible uses. Um, those overlays again create confusion to adjacent property owners, to the general public, to developers. And so what the purpose of all of this is, is just to clean that up, to make it more direct, so that the uses um, that have been developed or that uh, we wish to see with those overlays are just more directly addressed by a zone itself, rather than by an overlay.
Which that makes sense, that's what you're trying to do, except for number three, which you're leaving alone for now, which leaves it not clear.
That's correct. That was the the planning commission's recommendation, just because there was uh, quite a bit of consternation by some members of the public about that.
So can we make that more clear tonight?
Yeah, the the council could revisit that, that could be zoned for multi-family, that would not allow anything that's not allowed um, subject to the development agreement for that project. So it would just be, again, clarifying that it's multi-family.
Is that our only option, that it would be multi-family?
If, I guess I would suggest if it went to anything that's not uh, what would currently be allowed by the code, you'd want to open that back up to the public process.
And how, I don't, I don't really know how to go about that.
Heather, or council member, if I can address it a little bit. Um, some of these overlays were very complex, had very detailed sections of what can and can't be done. Um, what we brought back, uh, what we brought to you guys earlier in the year was a more comprehensive process for approving over master plans as it relates to a master plan overlay, and took away the very detailed complic- um, complicated rules on some parcels could do this and and that. Um, and so one of the comments that was brought up at planning commission was that the River Run Project on on site number three has very specific um, requirements that they have to meet as part of their development. If we were to remove that now, there there was concern that, you know, if they were to go away, it could develop with different requirements under high density. If we allow it to stay in the short term, see if they build, then um, then we could clean up the underlying zoning of what's built to match what the use is. However, if their development agreement expires, the council may have different ideas of what you want that zone to be. So we felt it made sense to address it in the future, such as at our comprehensive um, plan update to say, what is the vision? If there's no approved project there, what is the vision of the council to see there in the future? So we just, we did agree, you know, after discussing it after the public hearing, we kind of agreed it made sense to kick the can down the line on this one parcel because of the complication of the approved project and waiting to see if they pull their permits and move forward.
My second question, I'm sorry to interrupt all the other council members, is uh, number 10. The Sunset Highway, is that a parking right?
No, that is um, vacant property that's between the Orchard Place Apartments and the Sideview Neighborhood. So right now, it's just some forest, and there's a trail on the north side of it, uh, directly adjacent to the site for the uh, Orchard Place Apartments.
And that's zoned to be low density residential?
It's not zoned at all right now, it's just uh, right of way, unzoned right of way. And the proposal is to zone it to parks, open space, and public facilities.
Nice, okay.
Mike, does the Dogren Property uh, Family Park, yeah, you're turning it to parks, open space, which is perfectly acceptable. Does it need a separate designation, or are we just assuming that we can turn at that without a number on it?
It's within the same number two, the number two has got some.
Number two is bifurcated, bifurcated by uses. Okay, thank you.
Good question. Any other clarifying questions? All right, seeing none. Uh, if you are a member of the public and wish to comment about this agenda bill, please indicate in the chat box or by star nine. if you are on the phone. Call upon you. You'll have up to three minutes to speak. Please start with your name and address for the record. Can see in the chat box, we've asked for anyone. I'm not seeing a response so far. Okay, seeing none. Got to be C E D committee. Ms. Miller, you're the chair. Would you like to introduce the motion? I see we have a motion on page two twenty-six of the packet. Two sixty-two of my PDF.
You're muted.
My apologies, my cat was a little bit loud earlier. Okay, motion to approve A B two-one dash one-two-four and ordinance amending the City of North Bend official zoning map, providing associated amendments to N B M C Title eighteen related to zoning districts, including repealing N B M C Section eighteen dot one-three dot zero-one-zero relating to general overlay districts as a first and final reading.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Miller, second by Mr. Elwood. Wow, that's a mouthful, that motion.
I dropped my pack this time. I'm grateful.
Would you would you like to speak to the to your motion?
Um, I would. And just briefly, I really appreciate the in-depth look at this and the attention to it. So I appreciate Mike for all your efforts putting forward.
Thank you, and thank you to staff for coordinating this. I mean, the headlines that I read are Brendan Math here. Eighty percent of the changes proposed by this change will result in more parks and open space. Another headline is none of these changes are increasing housing as I can see it. The final headline there would be that all of these zones are already being used by their current uses. So there there's nothing monkeying with the use cases there. So so to me, it's just kind of a win-win, especially with the increase of parks and open space. So.
Thank you. Anyone else? I can see around, not seeing any hands. All right, let's see if I can do as well as Marion trying to read this motion. The motion before you is to approve A B twenty-one dash one-two-four and ordinance amending the City of North Bend official zoning map, providing associated amendments to N B M C Title eighteen related to zoning districts, including repealing N B M C Section eighteen dot thirteen dot zero-one-zero relating to the general overlay districts as a first and final reading. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries and it is unanimous. Thank you. Appreciate that. That is the end of our introductions for this evening. We'll move to mayor, council and administrator concerns and initiatives. And Ms. Miller.
Thank you, Your Honor. A very successful trick or treat street event occurred. So exciting to hear the commentary from many families I've spoken to. Very, very happy Downtown Foundation did a great job. The City of North Bend staff, wonderful. Kudos and more to come in the future. Thank you.
Possibly as high as a thousand participants.
Right.
Yeah, that was amazing. Thank you. Mr. Godell.
Yeah, I didn't I didn't get to go actually, you know, down there, but I did see the people going down. I've had neighbors who were down there and and the weather was spectacular for us on Sunday. So that was great. Most trick or treaters were very well behaved and even the neighborhood everything looked good. So congratulations to all. We've got some more rain and wind coming. So if you see our leaves blocking our strange dorms. Storm drains can't see. If you could clear them, if you see them, it will be helpful to everybody and save from urban flooding. Other than that, everybody have a great week and a safe week.
Thank you. Mr. Loudenbeck.
Yes, great event for the Halloween Treat Street, and I think congratulations to everybody who participated. I'm glad they had a great time. Just looking forward to continuing progress. I thought tonight went really well. And once we get past the first readings to the final readings on some of these issues, then maybe Ms. Mascow can finally get some sleep. That's it, Your Honor. Yeah.
Thank you. Great, great sentiment. Ms. Cohen.
All I have to say is I'm a vaccine hero and everybody, if you feel like getting a flu vaccine, now is the time. So please do it if you want to. And if you don't, that's fine, too.
Thank you. Mr. Rosen, I haven't heard from you tonight, I don't believe.
No, I'm saving it for a bit. Now I'm just glad to see kids getting to be kids and enjoying Halloween again this year. It was a it's a good sight and like to see a little normalcy coming back. I'm glad to see it in town and thanks for everyone for making that happen for all of them. That's just fantastic. They needed it. That's all tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you. Mr. Elwood.
Thank you, Your Honor. The the one thing is I heard on the news today that snow may be coming our way next week. Of course, it could change on the hour. I don't know, but if that's the case, it's just kind of good to keep in mind that weather is changing for whatever that means. The other piece too, and I'm glad you brought up flu shots. Ms. Cohen, that's good. I have I've had two friends each lose a parent in the last week and a half. Just got alerted during this meeting that another good friend of mine lost a parent this morning. The first, the first friend who lost his parent, I'm not sure what happened. But my other friend who lost his father this morning was due to COVID. So it's still out there. It's still a thing. It's still real. I'm going into our local stores here. I'm seeing unmasked people walk around. You know, and and it is still troubling me. It's still a real thing. So just trying to, you know, I hate to beat the COVID wagon because I know the last two years we've just been hammering on it, hammering on it. But literally within the hour, I just get alerted that somebody I know, somebody close to him just passed away because of COVID. So it is still a real threat. Wearing a mask is a social responsibility. You do it for protection of others, right? And hopefully yourself in the process, but that's all tonight. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Mr. Garcia.
Well, I'd like to congratulate Mr. Gothel, Mr. Loudenback and Mr. Jocelyn for the for your commitment you have made and remade. I'd like to thank the citizens of North Bend, at least at this point in time. Our TBD transportation district is is flying by. And and quite honestly, I'd like to congratulate every person, whether I agree with them politically or not, who had the courage and the fortitude to put their name on that ballot. I feel like every year the number of contested races seems to just shrink and shrink and shrink. And it gets harder and harder and harder for people to want to put themselves out there to 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 take on this responsibility. And it's a great effort. So my hats off to everybody that ran. A special congratulations to the three happened to be gentlemen this time that will be continuing and welcoming in to serve the citizens of North Bend. My hats off to you and I wish you the best.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia, and thank you for stealing some of my thunder from the TBD, but it is great. It's looking very good right now. So I wanted council to be aware of that. Mr. Miller. Anything for the administration?
I did attend a trick or treat street. And by my count, there were as many adults in costume as kids, and they were all having a really good time. And I spent about an hour in there in duck, looking out the window, watching them. And that is a fantastic celebration. Our downtown really shines when we do these things. So we'll continue to support it. The Downtown Foundation did a great job. Of course, our cheerleader Bree did a fantastic job. So those events are just priceless. That's the way you build a community right there. So just thanks to those people for doing that. And thank you all for your hard work tonight. When I sit here and watch the amount of business and the seriousness and the deliberations, this is local government at work. So congratulations to the council.
Thank you. I'll follow the trick or treat street with certainly a fantastic event, you know, later this this year yet, we have holidays coming up. One of our goals from the administration, and this is Bree's goal, so I dare you to turn her down is to get more council members involved at that event. I'd love to see some of you down there with me for the tree lighting at minimum. And so be be aware that that you're going to be hunted down by Ms. Kevin and 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 her cohorts there. Few other items for you, starting this week. Small section of four hundred and thirty-sixth Avenue Southeast between Southeast Cedar Falls Way and Southeast North Bend Way will close for several weeks as crews continue to work on the privately funded roundabout at the intersection of North Bend Way and four thirty-sixth. The work is weather dependent and subject to change. And this time of year, please hear us, subject to change due to weather. Detour routes will be clearly marked along North Bend Way and Cedar Falls Way. And local access will be provided for the residents along four thirty-sixth. Another construction note. We'll soon see a new barn raising at the Tollgate Farm Park near the existing farmhouse. Everyone I'm sure is aware of our yellow farmhouse out at Tollgate. Sign you M P D is managing the project, which will feature storage for hay and equipment, as well as a place for agricultural processing and program. Project will improve the park entrance on State Route two oh two and add parking near the farmhouse. We're very excited for that project. I'm personally very excited for it. I love farming, the historical aspects of it. Council do want to note to you, we will be holding a special council work study this next Tuesday, November ninth at seven PM via Zoom. The agenda and packet will be distributed to you on Thursday. At this time, we're going to enter executive session to discuss potential litigation pursuant to R C W forty-two dot thirty dot one-one-zero-one I. No action is anticipated to take place following this session, and we expect the session to last approximately twenty minutes. With that, Ms. Moscow, if you could allow out members of the public. Thank you. We have returned from executive sessions approximately nine oh five. There is no action coming out of that session. May I have a motion to adjourn?
I'm moved.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
There is, even if there is an objection. Thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone.
Good night. Be safe.